Good evening, everyone. We'll start our meeting. And I'm sure there may be some other people who are coming in. We're starting at a different time tonight to see how that works out and hope it works well for people. We'll now review and approve the agenda. Did you want to say anything more about changes in the agenda?
Sure, I'd be happy to. We made one slight amendment revision to the agenda. We added under action items, there's now an A and a B. We'll be looking and talking about the facilities usage rates as a second read tonight. And if that is approved, we wanted also to have a motion for the implementation of the approved facilities usage rates. So we just added that on to the agenda.
Could I have a motion to approve the minutes? Thank you, Sangita. And a second? Thank you.
The agenda.
Agenda, sorry. Sorry, we'll get to the minutes in a minute. Agenda, yes. And Sheri? Second on that. And now we'll move to, all those in favor? And that's unanimous, those here? Okay, now we'll move to the minutes. And is there a motion to approve the minutes? Yes, Jen? Motion to approve? Is there a second? Sangita? Any, at this point, everybody, please signify if you're in favor of accepting the minutes? Oh, I can't vote because I wasn't here, excuse me. So those people who are here, that will be sufficient to count. Okay? Thank you. And we're getting a vote in the door. Okay. We have now a session time for comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes are allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. So if there's someone who wants to speak, please come up and just say your name.
We'd like to request that we combine our time and speakers one. My name's Lauren Carlson, and this is Cassie Pelly, Grace Mangus, and Erica Spadacini. We are all student instructors at the Walter Shawk School of Dance. It has come to our attention that the Board of Education is thinking about restructuring the cost of renting out new Canaan Public Schools. This restructuring would most significantly affect non-local for-profit companies. One such company that would be affected is the Walter Shawk School of Dance. While the Walter Shawk School of Dance is technically a for-profit organization, its goal of education makes it more similar to that of a nonprofit.
Thank you.
The Walter Shawk School of Dance has been an integral part of our community since 1957. It provides excellent dance lessons for boys and girls from first to 12th grade in a fun yet instructional environment. It has impacted the lives of many children in New Canaan and surrounding areas for over 50 years, and this restructuring would significantly hurt the company. Walter Shawk rents out East School on a weekly basis to hold classes for its students, which is a large charge to the company. By significantly raising the prices, Walter Shawk might be forced to move its classes to another town or even cease classes in New Canaan entirely. The termination of this company in New Canaan would be a severe detriment to the town, and we urge you not to make any decisions that would negatively affect this dance school in any way.
Thank you.
This year, almost 400 children are enrolled in some form of Walter Shawk classes, whether it be hip-hop, jazz, ballet, ballroom cotillion, or musical comedy. They come because they love dancing, and Walter Shawk provides a way to learn great dancing skills without the large time commitment that other dance studios require. Walter Shawk gives them the opportunity to try new things and learn new skills, and by putting a strain on this company, you would be depriving these children from some amazing classes. Walter Shawk is a valuable resource to the community of New Canaan. For example, it is a fun place to get exercise and learn new dance skills without becoming a large time commitment. Furthermore, it teaches lifelong skills such as etiquette through ballroom and cotillion classes. Moreover, the recitals help children get over their stage fright, a skill that would be useful throughout life in public speaking. And last but not least, it creates lifelong friendships.
Thank you.
The Walter Shawk School of Dance also helps teach valuable leadership skills to high school-age students. We are all student instructors, and this means that we assist teaching classes to elementary and middle school girls and aid in leading the classes. We have all learned key leadership roles through this dance school. The Walter Shawk School of Dance has clearly impacted the lives of many of our New Canaan youth, including our own. Due to this, it is our fondest hope that you will take Walter Shawk into consideration when making your decision on the restructuring of the prices for renting out New Canaan Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you for giving us your viewpoints. Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening? There being no one else speaking at this point, or we will then move on from the comments from the public to reports and recognition and the opening of school reports. Dr. Lutzi, Dr. Carenti, Mr. Cass, and the principals.
And our principals are here tonight. Well, we have officially opened school, as you know. This is our first board meeting since schools are open, and it's an opportunity for us to share a little bit about how it all went. We've asked our principals to join us tonight for that purpose. I remember, you know, all the years as a high school principal, I would look forward to this night because it meant that things were open and running and smooth, and it's always nice to hear, I think, about a little bit about each of the buildings and the things that are going on. So, Dr. Carenti, if you have any intros, or we can ask our principals to step to the podium if we like, or will they be speaking from their seats? It's up to them.
Sure, I can just start by saying that, you know, we're really off to a great start, and the positive energy really began at convocation, and it really continued into the professional learning session on August 26th. The teachers were very busy unpacking new curriculum, looking at inquiry across disciplines, looking at ways to enhance instruction with iPads at the high school. So it was a very exciting day. I think all of that enthusiasm has rolled over into the start of the school year. I think we're off to a great start, and I think the principals really could give us some specifics of what has been happening in their buildings. Would we like to start with the high school?
Shall we begin at the high school?
And work our way down?
I'll go first. New Canaan High School. We were welcomed back to a new school year, to a beautifully cleaned and polished building thanks to the hard work of the custodial staff. Convocation activities were inspiring and thought-provoking, and we were all looking forward to getting underway. On the following day, over 125 certified staffers participated in an exciting day of professional learning, spending the morning engaged in differentiated instruction in management and instructional uses of iPads. Teachers indicated the training was extremely useful, and they especially appreciated the flexibility to engage in the use of the iPad at their own levels of expertise. During the afternoon session, teachers worked in their professional learning community groups, setting PLC goals and objectives for the year. School opened on August 27th with the arrival of just over 1,250 students, including approximately 350 students new to New Canaan High School. Counselors reported that this was the smoothest start in recent memory and attributed this to the meaningful discussions with students and parents during spring course selection, as well as the careful follow-up over the summer. We also welcomed three new campus monitors who have settled in quite nicely. Working with Steve Bedard and our veteran safety monitors, the new campus monitors quickly became familiar with the technical aspects of their jobs. More importantly, they have begun to get to know our students and have quickly become an important part of our NCHS community. One of the challenges we face each year is balancing lunch shifts. This year, Ari Rothman began on the very first full day of school collecting hard numbers for each lunch shift for each day of the cycle. Analysis of the numbers indicated how imbalances might be corrected, and Ari worked with department chairs to rearrange some lunch shifts to better balance the numbers of students in each lunch period on each day, so lines would be shorter and students would have more time to eat. The first PFA networking meeting took place on Thursday, September 4th. Over 50 parents of grade nine students were present, and Larry Sullivan, the grade nine administrator, provided parents with an overview of life at NCHS, and then answered parent questions covering a variety of topics, among them, the attendance policy, locker use or lack thereof, where to find homework assignments if students forget to write them in their planners. New this year is a small pilot program involving NCHS's participation in the virtual high school program. Two of our students are each taking one course in online learning through VHS, and thus far they have found it to be a great experience. They have told us the website is well-organized and user-friendly, and we look forward to getting their feedback about the program as they progress through their class. Administrators have gone into a number of classes to welcome students and teachers back. It's been great fun, and the students seem to really enjoy sharing what they're learning with us. Just the other day, I was in a Spanish III class where the students were working on a vocabulary-building activity. The entire class discussion took place in Spanish, and despite the fact that I've never taken Spanish in my life, I was able to follow the conversations because both the teacher and the students were determined to rephrase their comments in multiple ways until I could understand. Their enthusiasm in sharing their knowledge and their excitement in showing what they have already learned was inspiring. Finally, you may have noticed the large banner hanging over the main office window with the word "communication" and its definition: "A process by which information is exchanged between individuals through a common system of symbols, signs, or behavior." The administrative team at NCHS has chosen "communication" as a focus of our work this year, with an eye to enhancing and improving communication from school to home, home to school, between teachers and students, and among the staff. At NCHS, we have had a great opening and are looking forward to the year ahead. Thanks for giving me this time to share a little bit about our first days.
Thank you.
Good evening. At the middle, at the middle school, we set two goals for our transition. One was, the overall theme was safety, and the two objectives within that were emotional safety and physical safety. In the category of physical safety, we took our fifth-grade students as our newest members of the community and made sure that they were escorted to all their classes. That was a scaffolding that has obvious benefits in the first days of the school year. For all the students in the school, we worked on two foundational safety objectives. One was the building evacuation fire drill, and the other was the safety classroom lockdown drill. We've completed both of those with 100% mastery for our entire population. Very well done in our community this past two weeks. A new addition around the safety realm is the program that the School Resource Officer is bringing us. Officer Jeff Deek has been introduced and is making the rounds in his first two weeks getting to know the population, and we'll have a more detailed implementation of his schedule in the coming weeks. And finally, we have messaged to our students and our parent community some cautionary words about out-of-school behavior, as sometimes students are responsible for the comfort of their peers based on the behavior either over the internet outside of school or in town outside of school. So we've made some protective remarks to the parent community and our students about that condition. But physical safety isn't enough to provide a positive transition. Students have to feel emotionally and psychologically safe. And so along those lines, our faculty once again has opened the school year with three foundational practices. One is to create a sense of belonging for our students, and this looks different as each of the grades unfolds. Certainly, the fifth graders have a more tender opportunity to introduce themselves and merge with peers from the three sending elementary schools. And our eighth graders, who've been in the school the longest and sometimes know each other the best, still have an opportunity to come back after the summer and reintroduce themselves to their new combinations and teams and various courses. The second theme around psychological safety is a sense of accomplishment, and we can't take for granted how different some of these new routines are for all of our students. We certainly never want to take for granted how anxious some of our new students are. So simple operations like conquering your locker combination and assembling your locker ladder and facilitating your passing between many classes, these are new habits and routines for many of our middle schoolers. Even as they age up, they're introducing themselves to new parts of the school and new time schedules for the school. And finally, role modeling. Our faculty and our general staff is in the process of introducing themselves to all the students they have, in addition to making themselves present in the hallways and in unstructured times like lunch recess and bus arrival and dismissal. So every student, our goal in the first few weeks is that every student can identify a Saks staff member as somebody who is caring, easily approachable, and interested in their individual development. With regards to parent transition, we have two key events, so here's my plug for those. This Wednesday, the 10th, we are hosting a grade five parent orientation in the Saks cafeteria, and PTC is co-sponsoring that with us. And in addition, next Wednesday, the 17th, parents in all of the grades are invited to our school-wide Welcome Back Coffee at Waveny House. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. At South, as you know, we had our building project this summer, and I have to say, I don't think it could have gone better than it did go. So thank you to our building committee. We were promised that the building project would start on a certain date, and it did. We were promised it would end on a certain date, and it did, which is uncommon for many building projects, that they meet their deadlines. And walking into the school, we were allowed back in on August 18th, the week before school started, and I have to say, from going inside the building, it looked as if a building project hadn't happened. The building was clean, everything was in place, and just it was the outside of the building where you could see that windows had been removed, but the building looked neat, it looked clean, and it went as best as it possibly could. So thank you to the building committee and to Bob also for all the help of the custodians who did a fabulous job pulling our school together. Our teachers were let in the building on August 18th, so they had about a week to put their classrooms together, and they did a terrific job with that. So thank you to all of our teachers also. We have 546 students, which is a few more than we had last year. We have 49 new students, which is actually the highest number of new students that we've had at South since I've been principal, so 11 years. It's usually between 30 and 40 students. We have 27 sections of children. We had our meet and greet on August 25th, and that's a chance for parents and for students to come in and to see their classrooms, see their teachers, see their classmates. We also had a new-to-South gathering on that day, so all of our new parents could come in, see our school, take a tour of the building, and that was organized by our PTC. We have our Welcome Back Coffee tomorrow at Waveny, and that's a nice event for all of our parents to get together, to meet each other. And we also have our open house, our first open house of two tomorrow night for kindergarten through second grade. So it's been a great opening to the school year and a great couple of weeks. So thank you.
Hi, and I'm very proud to provide my very first school report here in New Canaan. At West School, we also had our new-to-West greeting for all of our new students, including Mrs. Fornari and myself, who both are new to West. The PTC also held a special meet and greet just for the two of us under the overhang in the front of the school, and we were served lemonade and ice water, and it was an opportunity for families to come on a late Friday afternoon to meet with us before school started. So we enjoyed getting to know some of our parents for that. We had our meet and greet for students the day before school started. They came in with their parents, met their teachers. We had our back-to-school assembly, and I'm going a little out of order, but we had our back-to-school assembly. It was my first back-to-school assembly at West, which was awesome. We got to do the Macarena, we danced to the YMCA, and we also reviewed the three Rs: be ready, be respectful, and be responsible with the students, and tried to unpack those and what those look like for kids. At our very first staff meeting, we got together and thank you to the West PTC, who provided a book, one of my favorite books called "The Dot" by Peter Reynolds. We kind of set the tone for the work that we're going to do this year and set the vision for the work by reading, having every classroom teacher read the book "The Dot" by Peter Reynolds, and it really gives kids the message that anything is possible, not everything, but anything. And we created a Wordle that would become a visual representation of our mission and our vision for our schoolwork, and hopefully we'll have that on display tomorrow night for our open house. We also were participating in something of the responsive classroom called the First Six Weeks of School, and the PTC was also kind enough to purchase name tags for all of the children so that Mrs. Fornari and I would be able to call the students by name and recognize them by name because we don't know any of them. So I've also found myself spending a lot of time in the kindergarten classrooms and a lot of time in kindergarten in the lunchroom. It's my way of dealing with the stress of the new year, plus I just love being around that age group. We had a very smooth start, I have to say, having lived through reconfiguration in a prior district. It was one of the smoother beginnings of the year that I've had in many years, so I was very happy, you know, with staff and students participating with that. We had our very first fire drill, and I was telling the other administrators a few days ago, it was one of the best I've ever had. So kudos to the administration at West for the way they've handled that in the past because it was nothing that I did. We have four new teachers. We have a grade K teacher, grade II, grade IV, and a new math curriculum resource teacher. We had our first West PTC classroom coordinator meeting, and that was very well-attended. Our first PTC executive board meeting. We met today for our school climate committee and have some great ideas for, you know, our three-R behavioral program. We've really just been assessing the school, just getting to learn, everybody, learn the students, learn the parents, learn, just learn as much as we can about the school, the arrival, the dismissal, trying to make sure everyone is safe. And again, we've been focusing on responsive classroom. We have our West PTC coffee tomorrow morning in our BBT in the Brown Bag Theater, and our open house tomorrow night is for grades, I think it's three and two. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. Good evening. At East School, we currently have a total enrollment of about 562 students, and even before the school year began, those students received a Welcome Back letter, and in that letter was a request and actually a postcard that they could send back to tell myself and Mrs. Fruein, our assistant principal, Maura Fruein, a bit about themselves, introduce themselves to us. And so we are curious to see what 562 of these postcards are going to look like. They're filling up the bulletin boards. We've told children that it's not too late to send in your postcards. Some decided that a postcard was not enough to tell about their summer, so they've shared a little bit more summer or sort of hopes and dreams for their year ahead at East School. And some have become very creative in terms of how they send them back to us. This is an envelope that a child spent quite a bit of time decorating to make sure it got to us at East. So this is filling up our hallways with the children's work, and I think it's symbolic of what we want this year to be at East. We really want students to have voice and ownership of the building, be a part of that learning community with us there. So within those 562 students, 37 of them are new to East. So we have new students, new families, and we also have many new staff members, from classroom teachers to a new writing specialist, new teaching assistants, new music teacher, new PE teacher. So with all of the new members of the community and new families, we've had PTC events to welcome everyone back. We had a fabulous ice cream social on a beautiful Sunday afternoon. The PTC has offered several opportunities for parents to come and sign up for volunteer experiences in the school. Those have been very well-attended. And we held Welcome Back assemblies our first week of school, where we brought the school community together, students and staff, to introduce each other, introduce the new staff, and included our 106 new kindergarten students, so they were welcomed into the school community. We reviewed our "Work Hard, Be Kind" expectations matrix with students, and we also made sure everyone knew the school song. Just those ways of becoming part of the community. Classrooms are settling into their routines. Teachers are making sure that children are aware of what those routines are, why those routines are in place. That sets the environment so that then students can take intellectual risks and problems solve throughout the year in an environment where they feel comfortable and know what the expectations are. Our teachers and staff are very enthusiastic about the work that's ahead this year with new curriculum, some new initiatives in the district. We had fabulous, as Dr. Carenti mentioned, fabulous professional learning sessions before children arrived at the start of the year, and the energy and the enthusiasm for the new curriculum work that they're undertaking and just new professional learning with each other collaboratively is very invigorating, I think, for everyone. One last piece, just to share, as I've been visiting classrooms, introducing myself to students, getting to know them again, particularly with third and fourth graders, have focused on asking them, what makes East School so great, and what is going to help us get even better at East School? What type of problem solving might we need to do? And the third and fourth graders in particular, and second graders, I should say, have had some very strong suggestions, everything from lunch choices to what types of activities might be useful on the playground, some problem solving of some issues they've noticed on the fields or in the playground, on the playground, ideas around morning announcements. And I share this because it's part of our theme this year again of finding ways for students to be a part of that learning community in terms of owning what the school is, who they are in the school, their place in the school, and having a voice in that, and really knowing that as adults, we're listening to them, and we want to work with them in creating sort of the next chapter at East School. So we're focusing on discourse, both academically in the classroom, and what is powerful discourse sound like academically, and also what does it sound like from a social-emotional perspective in our learning community, in our learning environment. So staff, students, all of us are excited for the work that's ahead. Thank you.
Can I just say on behalf of the board, thank you for having such a, first of all, your presentations tonight, but also for your thoughtful, caring, and knowledgeable expertise that makes every day for our students to be so special. And if you would please go back and tell the teachers, we appreciate also everything that they've done and the staff. I didn't know if you wanted to.
That's great. Just to share that, you know, in each one of these buildings, it's incredibly complex of getting all the pieces together, all of the teachers and staff, all the hiring, all the work that they did just organizationally to make it all come together. But what you heard in the presentations was all about the students, the spirit, the culture, the work that they're doing around that. And I think those are the types, that's the type of work that makes our schools truly special in what we're doing. You know, these five people are as responsible as anybody for the, really, the schools that we have, the work that we're doing, the wonderful staffs that work with them every day. And it's an incredibly exhausting, tiring job, but to hear you talk about the kids and the work you're doing and where it's all going keeps us focused on the work that we do, and makes me miss it a little bit.
I just want to say, from a parent perspective, I have children in a few of the schools, and I have loved the communication that we've been getting this year. You know, the emails, the PTC newsletters that are coming out once a week, but also, you know, I have a new child at the high school, so that meeting was awesome, and the newsletters that are coming out, and Greg, all the, you know, principals that sent out those emails at the end of the week. It's very reassuring when you send your kid to middle school and you kind of don't hear anything. So it was great to get the emails from the principals and from you that first week, talking about what happened and stuff. And then, you know, to start off the school year with your welcoming the students was also really great for, you know, that he sent out that voicemail, welcoming the kids, telling them to get a good night's sleep, everything. So it's all been very welcoming, and the kids are happy, so thank you.
Terrific. Again, you.
So my piece isn't nearly as exciting as talking about the students. My piece is really just about giving you updated information about enrollment and staffing. And I did give you some updated numbers that overall, we are starting out the school year, 16 students overall, more than last year as of October 1st. Our greatest number of enrollment increase has been at the elementary level, 53 more students this year than last year. Although when I was here three weeks ago, that number was at 72, interestingly. At Saks, our number is 25 fewer than last October 1st, 2013, and at the high school, 12 fewer students are enrolled. So just three weeks ago, we were 64 students above the enrollment from last year, but as of today, it's 16 students greater than last year. I also gave you information around the elementary enrollment, so you can see where our average class sizes are, so you have, I've updated all that information as of today. For hiring, big picture, as you know, we've hired many, many staff members over the course of this year, including custodians, food service workers, administrators, managers, a physical therapist, long-term subs, a secretary, three campus monitors, 16 teacher assistants in the district are new, and 28 teachers. A total of 65 new staff members are on board for the beginning of the school year.
Any questions? Yes, Sheri?
So really, just a question for Chris on the East enrollment, which is up to
So, really, just a question for Chris on the East enrollment, which is up two sections. And obviously, we didn't have two open classrooms sitting there, so just curious if we have any capacity, if we're pushing up against capacity issues, or what we did to accommodate those increased sections.
We are full at East, but we did have two classrooms. We can hold up to 29 sections, which is what we are currently at. So we were at 27 last year, adding those two additional classrooms brought us to 29. We, you know, still at this point have all of our special area rooms available, so art, PE, music, we have our strings room, we have our science, science classroom, science lab. We're using all of our space at the moment. So we share, we share well. Thank you.
Any other questions to ask about the enrollments? Okay, moving on to the next topic. Oh, was there a question? Moving on to the next topic, the state of the schools' facility reports. Ms. Harris, Mr. Willoughby.
I apologize for not coming up to the podium, but Bob will stand up for me on that. You have several different handouts. One are some colored pages that include the project status report on capital projects, and then one that says carryover funding from the town. In addition, you have narrative on the actual status of some specific projects throughout the district. So let me give you a minute. I may not have put them in exactly the same order as I just mentioned. This past year, as we went through the budget process, as we worked to try and bring the facilities into as great a condition as we had funding for, there were a number of different activities that took place. Perhaps Bob could walk you through the narrative first, which is much more interesting than the money pages, and he can speak with passion about them, since he and his entire staff, along with some contracted services, really worked with a minimum amount of funding and accomplished quite a lot, I think, for the 13, 14 year.
Thank you, Nancy. And thank you to the Board of Education and Superintendent. Some of the operational projects that we got involved with district-wide, and it's been something that I've been trying to do every year. We'd set aside some money to try to put new window shades in as many rooms as possible with the funding that we have. We've probably done five classrooms in every building for the last three years, so we're gaining on it. And we're going to blackout shades, so it helps with the smartboards, so that sunlight is filtered. New walk-off carpeting throughout the district. We rented some for a couple of years, we did some other things, and I just, Nancy and I talked about it, and we just went out and purchased new stuff, and it was all installed, and it's working very, very well. Custodians have been working with equipment that some's falling apart, we have some money put aside, so we were able to buy some really new equipment to give them an opportunity to save some man-hours and try to get as much done as possible. And they really did a superlative job this year. I can't tell you how hard they worked, each and every one of them. They really rose to the occasion. South in particular, the staff, we sat down, we talked about a plan on how we would work around the contractor while he did the abatement, and we'd get things, and we hit every mark all the way through. So it was, again, as Joanne mentioned, the contractor did a great job, met all the dates, and the custodians were right there, and the building really, really looked exceptional this year. We worked with the IT department and recycled a couple of truckloads of old IT equipment, some old televisions that we had, some racks that weren't being used anymore. Storage spaces at a premium, and we really haven't had the opportunity, and we were able to purge some of that, and they were able to recycle it at a very nice rate. I believe they did it for free. I think the recycling company picked everything up for them for free. As usual, over the summer, we cleaned all the univentilators, all the heating equipment. The guys did a yeoman's job of servicing all the equipment, getting it done on schedule, so we were ready for the children to come back. And of course, we had a lot of classroom moves. I wasn't intimately involved with all of those moves. Most of my head custodians really worked with the principals to figure out where things had to go and accomplished a great, great deal of work. We also worked with the IT department, who had a tremendous new installation, and we were able to run some new electric service to all the server closets, so we had everything on the dedicated circuits, and we did all that in-house with one of our maintenance men, who by the way is on his honeymoon right now. High school repaired overflow roof drain, something that was left out of the construction that we inadvertently found this year. Student must have got a soccer ball up on the roof, and it clogged the drain, and it exercised what they call an overflow drain. And the overflow drain is to prevent the roof from collapsing from weight. And it was leaking in a storage room, and we couldn't figure where the water was coming from. The pipe just ended, it was hanging out in the middle of nowhere. So we had to go back, clean the drain, get stuff, and hired a contractor to run the new drain outside the building. So, it was interesting for a couple of days, to say the least. Did an awful lot of work on exhaust fans. We had done work in the past, and it just got to the point where a lot of these exhaust fans needed to be replaced, so we were able to do that with in-house labor and also with an outside contractor. We had some floors in the kitchen that were delaminating. We'll talk about that again in the budget cycle, but we were able to go in there and make some temporary repairs. Basketball backboards, some motors and controllers went, we were able to fix those in-house. Crosswalk signs on the main road, worked with Ronnie last year to identify where the areas were, and we were able to get up and hang the signs, so at least people know that there are students that are going to be crossing that main road on a regular basis. And we were also able to put some speed limit signs up, try to avert some disasters. We had an issue in the photo lab here downstairs that we've been trying to work on for the last couple of years. We finally got a contractor to come in and he developed what they call a duct silencer. And we went in and took a section of the duct out and put this unit in. And what it does is it really just knocks down the noise, it's like a muffler on your car. So now, at least when a teacher is in a classroom with the photos, they're able to, the children are able to hear them, which was an issue. We replaced two large motors for the science rooms on the fume hoods. We replaced the interstitial space monitor, which is a, it's a double wall tank here for the fuel oil, and this monitors that space, so if you have a leak, an alarm goes off on a computer and tells you that, well, that wasn't operating at all. And it was a very lengthy process. We had a crack in the concrete, we had a problem with the sump. We had to dig it all up, put all new sending devices, and recalibrate the monitor. So now we're back and we're within code, and we'll know if we're leaking anything, but I don't believe we're leaking anything at all, and we hadn't, so. Major cooling tower repairs. We had found, when we worked with the building, the bus building last year, that you could hardly hear yourself think out in the back. And it wound up, it was the bearings on the motor shafts, it was the belts, it was some of the mechanical fittings that were on there. We pulled it all apart, brought a crane in, pulled it out, rebuilt the whole thing, put it back together. And that was an outside vendor. And we're back in action, and things are working very, very well. The refrigerant monitor, which is a safety feature in our chiller room, if the refrigerant leaks, what it actually does is it takes the oxygen out of a room. So if somebody was working in there and we had a leak in the chiller, somebody could be hurt rather seriously. That monitor, we had changed the fan on it last year. This year, we went back and we rebuilt the whole sending unit with all the sensors, and we're back up 100%. Over the winter, here at the high school, we had a lot of the concrete slabs near the exit doorways that were heaving. We broke up the concrete over the winter, and then when the spring came around, we redid the concrete work and pinned it to the foundation, so it's not going to happen again. Saks, we had some issues with rubber stair treads, we went back and replaced all those. We made some pretty serious playground repairs. We had a locker repair project that had been lingering for a few years, we were able to accomplish that. There were a lot of voids in the lockers where students had pushed them in. We pulled them all out, we had them all replaced. The kicks along the bottom were damaged, and we were able to get them, to do that at the same time. Cooling pipe insulation in numerous areas in Saks, we found that the insulation, not hazardous material, it's all cellulose, just over the years, it started to deteriorate. So we had to go back in on some of the larger pipes and redo the insulation. We had a storm drain pipe in the courtyard at Saks. We had that excavated, and we found that there were several sections of pipe that were broken, that collapsed, and the structure where the actual drain is was damaged in a couple of areas, and we had to go back in and patch that. We did that, and it's working out very, very well. We installed power horn speakers in the gymnasiums at Saks. When the kid, children were in the room exercising, you couldn't hear any of the announcements. So we went through a different type speaker, which is more of a PA, like a bullhorn, and now they want to know if we can lower them a little bit, but for security reasons, it makes a lot of sense. The lower division entrance doors, where the children go out from the lunchroom, head out into the playground for their recess, those doors get beat up terribly. So, we were able to go in and we restructured the framework, put a lot of new hardware on, and it held up through the end of the year last year, and I'm hopeful that it's going to, it's going to hold off for many years to come. We installed a new bike rack, we actually extended the one that was there. We repaired a lot and replaced a lot of faulty electrical breakers that we were finding in the kitchen. And now that we have an electrical contractor on staff, we're able to go and troubleshoot these things, keep the expense in-house and save considerably. We've identified some issues as we're going to go through our next budget cycle. Panels that, I don't know if you ever remember the old home fuses where you have these little glass bus fuses, they call them? Probably don't remember, I'm old. They're still around. They don't need to be there, we need to get them out, we need to replace new panels. They still meet code, but they're not very, very, very good. East, we installed new concrete pads and park benches near the playground. Had a lot of old wooden benches up in that area, and they just were falling apart. So we went out and bought nice new powder coated steel benches, had them installed for the start of school. Student cubbies, we recycled some cubbies we took out of West three years ago that were in the hallway. They were, the fire marshal didn't like wooden cubbies in the hallway. They're okay in the classroom, but not allowed in the hallway because of the fire regrets. So we had a new teacher up at East, and she was worrying about where she was going to put all the stuff for the children, and they said, oh, I got something hiding in the, got something in the closets. We pulled it out, fixed it up a little, installed it, and it's working very, very well. CO2 sensors in 14 classrooms at East. State mandates that you change out the air so many times an hour. I believe the current is three times per hour. So no matter what you do, there's a, it's like opening a window, the damper opens up and brings the air in. Installing the CO2 sensors allows you to regulate how often that opens. CO2 regulation says if it goes under 900 parts, over 900 parts per million, then you have to open the vent. What we've experienced now with these new sensors is we're probably opening them twice a day, or twice an hour rather than three times an hour, and it really reduces the amount of humid air that we bring into that building. I know Penny had spoken about it many, many times. It's built on a swamp, very, very damp all the time, and you keep bringing that humidity into the building, it's very hard to control the temperature. Painted the principal's office, which we also did at West. We had some new principals, so we figured we'd welcome them with new paint. The heating coil in the kitchen, unbeknownst to me, hadn't been working for three years. And it finally, over the winter, it got so cold in there, I said, something's wrong. So we did a little troubleshooting. In-house, we were able to rebuild it ourselves, we pulled it down, bought a new one, and they have nice heat in the kitchen. They were working on heat from the ovens, I guess, when they were cooking. Fortunately, we didn't have any broken pipes. In South School, we painted restrooms. We had gone in and changed some lighting the year before, really brightened them up, but then it showed all the dirt and the paint, so we decided this year we're going to paint them. So we were able to do that during the construction phase this year. In the library at South, very similar to what we did at East, there's a little cubby in the corner. The students used to go in and sit on these little elevated steps, and the teachers found that that wasn't what they really liked to do with the children. So we took them out, redid the floor, redid the walls, painted the area, got a new smartboard hung up in there, so now they have a little, like a reading center. South also got a new courtyard stage that was donated by the PTC, so I was able to work with them and get that installed. And West, back there, we painted some restrooms, we painted the principal's office, and we placed some damaged concrete sidewalks and granite curbing at the bus drop-off. This is a sampling of what we did, I probably talked to you for days about all the little things that we do. I mean, numerous door repairs, window repairs, the maintenance guys were running ragged, tried to get it all done. And then you get back to the opening of school, and we're building furniture, we're hanging bulletin boards, we're helping with whiteboards. So, we spent a lot of good quality time prepping the buildings so that they were ready for the students. Thank you.
And I think you can see, this is just a smattering of the day-to-day activities of our entire facilities department under Bob Willoughby's leadership. I don't believe that, as I walked around the schools last year, and was able to get around to all of the schools this year, such as it was, that I believe that there was a fairly dramatic difference in the look of every one of the schools as teachers and students came back to welcome the 14, 15 year. And it's because of the commitment of the board, but the passion by Mr. Willoughby and his entire team. So, you just saw a smattering, but wait, there's more.
And I just do want to quickly say, every, each one of the principals shared how happy they were with the shape of their building when they came in, and thanked the custodians. And these are the types of things, small things, big things, that make that difference and set that right tone. So, Bob, you're working hard, getting a lot done. Thank you.
We all appreciate it, realizing that the environment that we're in and the environment that the students are in makes a big difference as to what happens in learning also. So we appreciate very much what you and your crew have done. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
But the two colored sheets also paint an even more complete picture of what's been going on since the Board of Education first started talking about facilities as part of our 14, 15 budget development process, to the point where we were, we received an appropriate, several appropriations by the town, not only in our general fund, but also in our capital funds. And so, tomorrow, Brian, Bob, and I are going over to the Board of Selectmen, and I thought that this first colored sheet really tells a wonderful story. The first two, the first group, the ICT infrastructure upgrades of 464,000, you heard from Scott Barnett, on time, on budget. And it's working, they just tested Saks today with 300 or 350 iPads going on all at once. Awesome. It worked. The West floor tile replacement in the corridors where it was popping up because of moisture, completed. We have some energy projects where the town will, we've partnered with ESC and have signed an agreement with Connecticut Light and Power to be available for some energy rebates. And so the next group of four projects that are listed in Group Two. are listed in Group Two are all going before the Board of Selectmen for approval, for me to sign the contracts on them tomorrow. You can see that that is well over $400,000. These projects have been in the works. Bob has been working for a full year with ESC, bringing me into the conversations as we developed. The next group, the group labeled Group Three, while they are, these are also energy conservation projects, but CLMP does not recognize them for rebates. Again, this group of contracts is going before the Board of Selectmen tomorrow as well. And this is the valves. And any of you who went on the tour of Saks for the technology, we went into hot rooms, we went into cold rooms, and then some rooms that were kind of okay. And it's all about the valves in terms of controlling that. And so you can see that we have $110,000 worth of valves that we're partnering with ESC on, as they have been instrumental in our controls. And at the same time, in Group Four, we have $57,000 for a facilities analysis, our building condition survey. We are hiring, or we are recommending that we hire Silver Petricelli and Associates to do that survey. I expect to receive approval from the Board of Selectmen. Silver Pet is prepared to begin pretty much instantaneously so that by the time we're at the end of October, we will have a full report, and so that we can begin the strategizing for our revised five-year capital plan. So those are all in the works. We're ready. We're poised. We're just waiting for the Board of Selectmen's approval. Bob has been working with Aquarian to get an evaluation on the Saks Backflow Preventers. I missed, I'm sorry, I skipped the Group Five. Again, we've hired Silver Petricelli and Associates to develop the bid specs, to upgrade those bathrooms at both East and South. And so as soon as we get those bid specs, we'll go out to bid and then have contractors work on those. Many of you who took the facilities tour remember those very special places. So you can see, out of 1.445993, basically $1.5 million, basically, we're left with planning, what, the $36,000 that was left from the original $100,000 for the South School Playground Hill and Modification, the Saks Rooftop Airhandler Unit. We have established the Saks Auditorium Design Committee. We had our first meeting last week. Thank the board members who joined us on that committee. We have another committee meeting at 8:00 AM this Thursday, so we're rolling. And we have scheduled pretty much every Thursday morning at 8:00 for the next two months. So we're going gangbusters on trying to get that preliminary ideas pulled together. So there doesn't leave a whole lot left. Below that is the Capital Nonrecurring. That $175,000 is basically painting. If you remember, the town removed that $175,000 from the board's operating budget and put it into Capital Nonrecurring, and it's designated for painting. So some of the painting that Bob did this summer has already hit that account, but he's got some other plans. He's trying out four different contractors to test them in terms of the quality of their painting in different locations. And the $692,000 of the technology plan, that's the purchasing on lease for new technology equipment to replace old. And I think all but about $90,000 to $100,000 has already been spent, and most of that equipment is already in the schools. So it has been one heck of a busy summer. But we also had the opportunity, on the second page, this was the 2013-14 funds. And this is actually the information that I forwarded on to the town. I had requested carryover of $50,000 for the East, South, and West window caulking design. It really was the South School Window Project seed money. And that's basically all used up now. We had a carryover request for the crack seal of the parking lots, and Bob worked with Tiger Man, and the town completed some of that at both East and West. And if you want details, Bob can provide them. Bob is bringing in, we still have an issue with the marine biology lab, and Bob just closed, got a proposal finally this past week, and is bringing in someone who used to work for the Norwalk Marine Maritime Academy to really try and home in on what the issues are there. So that one still has not been encumbered. And then you can see the East and West roof repairs. The West roof is 90% complete. It may even be more than that now. And the East is 95% complete. So we did turn back $110,339 to the town as of June 30th and requested the carryover of $304,600, most of which is pretty much done now. So again, a lot has been happening with facilities under Bob's direction.
It has been busy. It has been busy. This list is exciting. Those of us that took the tour really do appreciate all of these things that have been changed and fixed and brought up to par. So thank you.
And one last update, again, and I'll look to Jean to jump right in here. The Phase One of South School Building Project has been completed. I think I mentioned it at the last meeting, but we are jumping right into the deep end on finishing up the design. Our anticipation is that we will be bringing to the Board of Education design specifications and an estimated budget to you in the end of October so that we can begin the bidding process. We have to go up to this school facilities unit at the state, get their approval before we can go to bid, and then we would like to award the contract in December. Jean, you want to add anything?
Thanks to Bob and yourself, really, for your efforts. We are going smoothly, although there have been some challenges, but I don't think they're, I think every project has its challenges. And fortunately, they've all been overcome to this point in time.
That's good news. Any other questions? Sherri?
Very comprehensive. Thank you. Just going back to the Saks auditorium line item, can you just expand on the committee makeup? And then also, my understanding, this budget number is for a design proposal, and just the high-level timing on when you'd be moving forward on the design of it?
Well, at our opening meeting, we really set some very tight timelines. We were incredibly fortunate. Obviously, Bob and Brian were there, but we were also fortunate to have Sangita and Hazel joining us as well. And in order for us to have a chance at getting funding for any kind of construction in 2016, we need to have to the board by, I said the beginning of January, and I think we compromised for the end of January, we had to have a comprehensive preliminary budget, which means that there had to be a draft of a design. So that kicks us into high gear, because in order to go before the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, and the Town Council, and to fold it into our five-year capital forecast, we had put in a $2 million holding place for 2016. But we were very clear that it was merely a holding spot. So we have to get a lot more clear. Our scope of work needs to be fine-tuned much more so. Brian, did you want to jump in, or Hazel?
No, I think that's exactly right. Everyone at the table was committed to that tight timeline, understanding what it entails. So they've already been out on visits of a few auditoriums and continue to do that. So the work really started the morning after the first meeting to try to get the ball rolling on all this. And thanks, Nancy.
I had a couple of things to add to it. There were some other members on the committee. Jim Bell, who's done many projects in town, working as a volunteer diligently. Molly Lutke, who is a parent who's been very involved, as Sangita has been, in the many plays and performances that have been given. Ken Campbell, who is on the Town Council, and Bill Walbert are also members. And the person elected chair is our own Penny Ration, who, as we know, has gone through several projects and done a terrific job on them. So I think that keeping to the deadline with Penny, she's very rigorous about this. And as Brian said, the visits to the different, tomorrow, I believe it's the Darian High School Auditorium and the Westport Middle School Auditorium that are being visited. And we've done, this was, this will be, let's see, today was the third one, places in town that we visited.
We had a chance to look at just Saks and the high schools, so everyone can see what we have currently. And we took a look at a professional, and we went to the Powerhouse Theater today to take a look, to see that. We're also looking at the Stanford Palace Theater, again, to see, you know, what the top end is and what areas and things that we're missing, and we want to see what we can utilize from the space that we have. But what's nice is that we do have several members who have been involved with the building committee and bringing, like Jim brings a wealth of information, you know, about making sure that we get our decks in a row. And we're looking to see whether we want to bring in an owner's agent to come in with negotiations as we go through this. So we are going through a lot really quickly because we want to keep to that timeline, so.
But it's fortunate, just as Sangita says, it's a very experienced group of people that have done a lot of building and construction, and also people that have been involved in the theater in New Canaan and in other places. Alan Sneath, of course, has been very active in this, and he was with Kentucky Hall, and I want to make sure his resume gets proper dignity, too. He has quite a background, too, that's wonderful to be able to have on this committee.
And one thing, I think when they did the high school, which was kind of missing when they did the alternative, was that they didn't really get to talking to the people and get the input in for those who actually use it. So we are going to go to the directors, both Dee Alexander, who's the director at the high school, plus Lauren and Matthew, who do the directing at Saks, to get their impressions, because a lot of it also has to do with lighting and sound, particularly in Saks. You know, Saks' sound is a big issue. But also looking at what the purpose is, it's not just a theater, but also for presentation. They kind of use it as a multi-purpose room, so we want to make sure that the school needs are being met when we do this whole project proposal.
So all in all, it's a great team, and everybody's prepared to roll up their sleeves and dive into the deep end and just push through so that the board can give it its due deliberation.
Very well said. Very well said. Now, moving on to the special funds update. Ms. Harris?
Okay. You also have a number of sheets. You have a single sheet that is labeled Statement of Educational Grant Funds. And then you have three sheets that look almost identical. The financial statement for facilities rentals, the financial statement for the summer learning program, and the financial statement for the school lunch program. When I presented to the board the end-of-the-year report for the general fund, I promised I would come back. And so I came back with reinforcements. I wanted to introduce to the board your budget director, Frank Cavallari. And so he has been instrumental in not only working with the town to try and reconcile our Board of Education records with the town's records. And it continues to be a back-and-forth effort. He's getting it to smaller and smaller issues and all. But at the same time, he is the person who manages all of the education grant funds from a financial perspective. We have individual program managers, such as Dr. Corenti and Ms. Bianca, and I guess Ronnie will be doing the Perkins Grant now. But again, I wanted to take the opportunity to introduce my third right-hand man, Frank, and in a non-stressful environment, way before we begin the budget process.
That's right. Thank you. See you in October.
So we've put together the Statement of Educational Grant Funds. And as I mentioned, Frank actually manages the cash drawdown from the state. They send us the request form. It's called an ED 111. And we have to request cash two months in advance. They require a lead time of two months in order to bring cash down into our grant funds. So he manages that on a regular and ongoing basis. What this report does is give you a sense of the money that just came into the district, anything that says current came into the district for, actually, July of 2013, and has a life of two years. Most federal grants have a two-year life, except Perkins. Perkins is a one-year grant. So when you see current, you'll see that in Title One, the only carryover money that we have left to use this year is $116. As you know, we fund a number of staff out of the state and federal grants. So for Title One, we've used all but $116. So for the 14, 15-year, we can go wild with that. We'll use that money up first and then use the 14, 15 grant funds to continue funding. Title Two, you'll see that there's public and non-public. The public, obviously, is to be used by us as the public school. And the non-public, we make available to the non-public schools here in New Canaan. You'll see that there really is not a lot of money in Title Two. And we have carryover of 46,853. We will be turning back $533 to the state from the budgeted available of 27,375. Again, the non-public, we have 14,833 that we can use in 14, 15, and we're turning back $412. Title Three, again, we used up all $929 of the carryover money, and we still have our $4,717 to be used in this year. Our largest grant, which is the IDEA Part B, you'll see that we received a budget of $700,000. $715,909, and we spent $711,688. Again, mostly that staff. So we have $4,221. You can see there's a few bits and pieces that the IDEA Part B, Section 619, which I believe is the preschool door, and then the Technology Bond Fund, where we had gone out to bid at the same time that we bid on the infrastructure and we purchased the equipment, and our folks are going to be installing in itself. So we bought the equipment. It has not yet been installed, and I believe Scott mentioned that to you when he did his presentation. And then Perkins is strictly a high school grant, and we fully expended. So let me stop there and see if there's any questions.
So when does it get turned back and why, it's not a carryover for the 412? I'm not quite sure. Why do we turn it back?
Well, if we have not, it's two-year money. So this carryover money, that $27,373, for instance, came in as 1213 money for use in 1213 and 1314.
I see. So they're not all the same years?
So we get a new batch of money every year with a two-year life. And so that one was, it started out 1314 as carryover. So next year, you'll see 46853 as carryover, and we'll spend all of it. Or there may not be a way to spend every penny. And if we don't spend every penny, then we have to turn it back to the state. So that's kind of how that works.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, because Frank's prepared to answer them.
You said zero stress.
Not a question, but can I say welcome, Frank, to coming? We're appreciative of you being here and glad you're here.
Thank you.
So then, if there's no questions on the state and federal grants, then we have, oh, I'm sorry, Sangita.
The money that's a lot of, the Carl Perkins, it's for the high school, are they particular? Do we apply for a certain project that is applied to, or is it just a general for some high school expenses or?
It goes to the engineering programs. So it helps to support our project Lead the Way as far as all those coursework in that. So they have a budget that they are able to maybe send people out for professional development, or take children on to field trips to help enrich those programs that they offer at the high school.
Great. So when we apply for these grants, we apply specifically for that, or is it that just, they just give it and then we decide?
No, we apply for that specifically. So it's a grant that's offered by the state. We apply for it in the spring. It's usually about the same money that we're awarded each year.
Moving on then, the other special funds are those that we generate revenues. Let me take the School Lunch Program first because it is our largest. And last year at this time, I had informed the board that in 1213, the School Lunch Program operated at a loss. And we made a commitment that we would not operate at a loss again. And there were a couple of reasons for that. One was that we were expecting the program to cover all of the debit card fees, and with the board's support, we stopped that. That made a huge difference. We also did some cost cutting, trying to control food costs, paper costs, as well as managing staffing costs as effectively as possible. Again, this is a $2 million, basically a $2 million operation, and it's probably, we probably operate the largest short-order restaurant in New Canaan, serving, well, serving 4,500 kids in two and a half hours every day. And I'm not sure any of us would like to do that. So what you have here is clearly the revenues of $1,863,315 and 10 cents. And then Frank has tried to mimic our Statement of Accounts line items, so that, again, you're familiar with this format, and showing salaries, obviously, is a significant portion of our expenditures. The employee benefits is FICAMED, employer taxes. It is not the health benefits of the food service workers, as you've heard me say before. One of the goals is to get a handle around this program enough so that we can shift those health benefits from the general fund into the food service program. But it's going to, first, we needed to get it on a positive footing, and then we could start chipping away at some of the other goals and objectives. So we hit our first goal.
Just to get a quick idea, I mean, from the town, have you gotten sort of what the health benefits number would be for the, what they're taking on right now for that piece of the special fund?
For the town?
What part of the health benefits? How much cash is the town expending on health benefits for the food service worker?
Well, it's coming out of the board's general, it's coming out of the board's health account.
Oh, okay, okay, I misunderstood.
So it's included in the Board of Education's general fund.
Okay.
When we budgeted that $12 million in health benefits, it included those 36 to 40 people as well.
Yep, I got it.
Sorry. You can see that repairs and maintenance types of things, mostly it's repairs to equipment, is $29,527. The books, equipment, and supplies is, again, the same line. Most of that is food and paper. About $700,000 of that is food, and the balance of that is paper and miscellaneous supplies, of course, for their point-of-sale equipment as well. And then other expenses is just some miscellaneous things at $15,000. The second thing that Frank prepared is a cash flow, so that you can see how the cash comes in, and a lot of that is tied to parent deposits into the debit card system. You can see that we load up on cash, coming in in September, big rush, people fill up their children's accounts, usually try and get at least 20 days' worth of balance in there. And as you look to June and February, you'll see not a lot of cash comes in. One, February is a very short school month. We have a February break, so we really only have about three weeks of school if we're lucky and not have snow days. And then, obviously, in June, everybody's trying to let their accounts run out. So this, while it's cash coming in, is not necessarily earned dollars, because in our ending bank balance, there are balances that people carry over to the next year. So that's why the P and L matters. But what Frank's done is provide you with the adjusted book balance at the bottom of that second page. I should, and I neglected to mention as I introduced these three accounts, unlike our grant funds, which are part of the same bank account as our general fund, these three accounts are standalone accounts. They are silos. Each one of them, we have its own checkbook. So it doesn't run through the MUNIS system, even though, so the cash doesn't run through the MUNIS system. We book all of our expenditures through MUNIS so that we can track them in exactly the same way. But what happens is, the town fronts the money for us out of the town's general fund, not the board's general fund. So when you see at the bottom of each of those cash flow statements, reimburse the town for expenses, they fronted that money, and then we have to write, physically write them a check to reimburse them. So that's a standard that has existed in New Canaan. A small goal of mine would be to change that, but we've got some major goals, so it may not happen this year.
Yes, Jean?
There were two other areas, by the way, which the board and yourself worked to help make this profitable. One, of course, was collecting the unpaid balances, and the other one was to institute the Free School Lunch Program.
It did not get implemented. The menu requirements, it became clear that it was beyond Bruce's ability to craft those menus after working with the folks at the State Department of Education. He has since hired a consultant to try and work the federal requirements through. So we're going to revisit that at this point in time. We did not reach that goal.
Sangita?
So you said you'd like to change the way it's done. In what way would you change it, ideally?
Well, ideally, what I'm used to seeing, and what I've seen in multiple different school districts, with the advent of computers and the ability to keep track of accounts using a fund management system, so Fund I is the board's general fund, you know, Fund IV might be grants, those kind of things, you can have all one account. You don't have to have separate silo accounts with checkbooks and things like that. You could put all the money in one account and track it. I think once we have proved to be credible and able to show both the board and the town that we can effectively manage, then I would propose that we move forward one account at a time. But at this point in time, I don't think that that time has arrived.
Sure. Just to know what's coming. And then so for next year, so we have, for this year, we're going to have a 51-plus in the positive. Is that going to show up then in next year, since it's one account, that just stays in that account? Right?
That's correct. These are funds under state law that are controlled strictly by the board. They do not zero out at the end of the year similar to the general fund. So just as with grants, we get to carryover money, and you manage it that way. One of the things that we need to show, since there was a lack of credibility in terms of how we managed and whether we had P and L's and things like that, I just think that we need a little more history.
Good, nicely done.
Deanna?
I just have a quick question as to, you know, we talk about sort of the goal of sort of taking it, being it a self-supporting program, and I think, you know, it's obviously a laudable goal. I don't know what kind of feel you have for how far away we are from reaching that goal. And also, you know, sort of in the spirit of what the School Lunch Program was intended to be, I think we also have to sort of make sure we are mindful of, you know, how much, you know, we want our students to be paying for lunch, and I think we should sort of be very aware of how much we want to take on in that account. I think it's a good goal. I just don't know, I mean, I think it speaks to the earlier question I had as to how far away on the health insurance dollars we are. Is it a huge number that, you know, because, I mean, obviously, none of us want to be burdening kids with, you know, excessive lunch fees. So I just...
Well, it is. It's a pretty big number, and it may not be possible, nor from the board's perspective or from an administrative recommendation, might it be even feasible. It may just be bad policy from that perspective. Having said that, I think that we could look at some short-term goals of at least looking at the three full-time employees, the director, the assistant director, and the basic bookkeeper. They are full-time employees of that program, and I believe that the program should at least be able to support the actual cost of those benefits. I'm not sure we're ever going to get to, nor am I sure that the board will want to price its lunch in order to be able to cover all of it. But that's probably a discussion for another day.
Can I just ask a question also about the, when you mentioned about the free and reduced lunch, at this point, then we would be having a program for children that have identified, that are families that have identified under that criteria, those criteria?
Yes.
That they would be eligible for it, and we are supplying the free and reduced lunch now.
Yes.
So that would be another thing that we have to make up as part of our...
Right. We're subsidizing, absolutely, as well we should, since this is part of the free public education and school lunch is part of that.
Any other questions that anyone has on that? Yes?
I have a question on the Summer Learning Program.
Oh, sure, are we going to go?
Are we going through those?
Oh, sure. Unless you want me to be quiet.
No, no, I just didn't know if you were going through this one as an example of the new detail reporting on the standalone funds.
We can do the others more quickly if you'd like. How about if I jump into then Summer Learning, since you have a question on it? Again, this is a program that offers a lot of summer enrichment for New Canaan students, and we're never, ever quite sure of who's coming till they come, which is kind of an interesting approach for planning purposes. You can see that we earned $326,000 of income, and the program made a profit of $116,950. I think that one of the things that's going to be on the agenda, on this year's upcoming agenda, will be some discussions on how to more effectively operate this program, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Lutze.
As we look at, you know, the profit in the Summer Learning Program, that does include our Summer School Program as well, so it's more than just that one Summer Learning piece. We see there's opportunity there, I think, to look at the funds that are coming in and talk about future possible investments.
Because this generated a material income, and so I was wondering if we were going to look at opportunities for, you know, expanding the educational, you know, some new curriculum perhaps, or even scholarships, or, you know, how, you know?
Yeah, and that's exactly what we began talking about today. We'll have future discussions about it. As Nancy mentioned before, it's a fund that does carryover year to year, so it's something that, you know, we'd want to look, the investment would be in the Summer Learning Program around the extended opportunities that are available to students. And again, we have our Summer School Program as well that comes through this. There's maybe some other possibilities, too, but it would all be related to the purpose of the account itself.
That's a terrific idea, because I think that many students have their schedules very full, particularly at the high school with terrific courses, and they wish they could take more because they're exciting and they can't take any, it would be going to night and day school, but this would be a wonderful opportunity for some students.
Well, just on that, I think this actually is an opportunity, because I think there are a lot of families and students who look to the summer enrichment as affordable, enriching summer activity, but yet, you know, a lot of that curriculum is somewhat stale. So, for example, if we could use some of these funds to invest in a new summer STEM class, or, you know, if we could look at this as an opportunity, I think it, you know, there would be... would be some new things we could look at.
Sounds good.
And lastly, facilities rental. This is an account where we had had much discussion as I was brought into the Board. You can see that we had rental income of $181,404.94. The salaries is basically our custodial overtime that we bill out. The employee benefits is the FICA Med, the employer portions of that that goes along with it. Basically, one of the things that we're shifting to, and you can see that there was a loss, that was deliberate. The Board had discussed a year ago through the superintendent that there was some issues about building up money in that account. And so you'll see on the cash statement that's behind it, there's less cash in the bank at the end of this year, and that was deliberate. We did some repairs and maintenance that were appropriate to apply the facilities rental fees to. So that was a conscious decision to shift some of those expenditures to this account to help draw down the fund.
Jean?
I'm not an accountant, so it's probably obvious, but I don't understand. If we lost, and I'm going to use round numbers, $11,500, and if our adjusted bank balance was 29, $239,000, and we lost $11,000, why isn't it now $228,000? I realize that $160,000 went to the town, but I don't, I don't understand again how if we had $239,000, we lost $11,000, why we don't end up at, at $228,000? I'm sure this is a good answer. And I'm, I'm sure I didn't catch you at anything, but I'm just not following from the presentation how that happens.
Okay. Well, well, let me start with, so that the bank statement actually has 200, the June 30 bank statement says the balance is $249,942.58. There's a payment in transit that will drive it down to $239,000. Then we need to reimburse the town again for expenditures of the $160,000 that they fronted for us. So-
But wouldn't that be under expenses?
Well, here you're dealing, on, on this page, it's strictly cash. And on the front page, it's a modified accrual basis. So we actually have several different expenditures that we had encumbered but not paid for, so that the bank statement would be higher, because we have 18, say, $18,000 in round number of an encumbrance that's listed as an expense, but it hasn't hit the, the checkbook as of June 30. So on the second statement, it's actually just cash in, cash out, as opposed to on the profit and loss, it includes encumbrances for things that we've already purchased but have not yet paid for. Because, again, the modified accrual basis, it's similar to when we're closing out the year, and I mentioned that we have, we pay a number of 10-month people over 24 pays. They earned that money over 10 months, but we're paying it out in July and August as well. So we encumber it, so it's a legitimate expense, but the cash isn't going out the door until July and August. So that's kind of the difference between the modified accrual basis and the, and cash statement. What that second page is, is strictly cash in, cash out. We did have expenses that were encumbered of $18,093. We had some bank charges of $1,155. We had $2,600 of voids, so-
I don't think I was looking for the little details. Looking for to somehow marry page one with page two, and I guess that you don't really marry them.
You really don't.
Another question. It shows $181,000 income, and yet this little sheet here, which isn't necessarily complete, shows up, if you add up, about $71,000 of rental fees. And I'm still looking, and it's probably the same kind of an answer that we're comparing apples with oranges in some ways, but I'm trying to reconcile $71,000 with $181,000. And I'm $110,000 shy, so I don't know if it's an accounting thing or whether there's $110,000 worth of additional revenue you've, you've taken, but from very small parties or-
Well, yes. This was trying to be a representative group of renters that you could look at the differences, winners and losers in terms of the proposed rental fees.
So it's not a complete listing?
It is not an attempt to be a complete list.
Would it be possible to show what column, I might call column B and C would be under the new proposal for everyone, i.e., it'd be very interesting to say that under the new schedule, if we had the same cast of players re-characterized, that we're going to get X dollars more or X dollars less in total under the same exact circumstances, which of course will not occur. But that would be interesting to know whether in fact we're raising our rentals, if you will, for the same cast of characters or lowering them.
This, this sheet here, Jean, that you're referring to-
It's just partial list.
-is put together for our discussion around the facility rental rates that we'll have in a little bit. Right, we just looked at some of the highest use, you know, some of those, just to get a sense of it. As far as going back and doing all of them, when I think about the high school, the buildings used every day.
Okay, so that, you have not made a complete list.
No, this is just some high-frequency users that, just to illustrate the impact for, for that discussion that we'll have later.
Okay.
Other questions? Thank you. Thank you very much. Are you going to open up and frame this for us?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Just, just to go back on, to make sure that everybody understands where we are on the rentals with the information that we're going to be voting on tonight, just to what we have and what the charts are and what they indicate, I think. Make sure.
Yep. So on July 17th, we accepted for first read the facility rental rates based on the revised policy that was put together. So in, in front of you, you should have a copy of the policy itself, those rates, and then the sheet that Jean was just referring to, which shows some of that impact for tonight to look at and discuss, continue the discussion of those rates with an understanding of impact, which is the sheet here. And to make decision to, tonight, or to continue the conversation.
I think it might be good to start with, to see if anybody has any questions. I think there was one question about how the rates were developed, and that was-
Just the motion to-
Okay, we'll start with the motion then first. We have a motion that is on the floor, that is, we're looking at, and the motion is to move to approve the proposed facilities usage rates dated 7/17/14 as first moved and seconded by Mrs. Ration, Ms. West, respectfully, on July 21st, 2014. So at this point, this is a second read, and so is there a second for that motion?
So the motion opens it for discussion. Motion is second, and then it can be amended or can be tabled at that point, if you, if you like, as well. But in order for the discussion to continue for that piece, the motion just, it doesn't approve it, but it opens it up for us to, to have that discussion, and it can be amended if-
Yes, Jean?
I am ready to discuss. I, by the way, would like to approve-
Well, we need, I'm sorry. Someone should, needs to move and then second, and then we can open for the discussion.
Move in a second. Who would like to do that? Thank you, Jen. Move in a second, move on it.
Discussion.
Yes, okay. Now we can open up.
So this is not the motion to approve?
No.
Now, now we discuss.
Now we discuss. Yes, Jen, oh, maybe we should go back to Jean and we'll come back to you, okay, Jen?
My own feelings are that I would like to approve it. I realize I'm not literally approving it, but I am, I am satisfied with it. But of course, it brings up the issue of the four young ladies who spoke to us about the Walter shock. And I don't believe that we should change the rules. I think that we should use some discretion in this issue, because I'm sure that in the future, there will be other instances where the rules were not crafted to exactly reflect many of the realities of the organizations that are seeking to rent our space. So again, my feeling is that I would approve it and that I would look upon the Walter shock thing, that the Board and the administration should have a conversation as to whether they fall into an exception, because they clearly do fall into category five. But I wouldn't want to modify category five to, and then who knows, we're going to come up with some other people who maybe slipped through, that should have been five, but they're four now, so I would just leave it as it is and use discretion to handle that case.
Well, certainly, they had the greatest impact change with the new system. They would have a big impact. Jen, your turn.
And just kind of mirroring that, I mean, I've, I went to school here. It's been here forever. And I mean, I agree that they need to pay, but like, this number is, I mean, it's, they, they probably would leave. And then what is that, I mean, if they did leave our school system, how does that impact, you know, the dollars that come in? Because they're clearly one of the largest, I mean, they are the largest-
Are they?
Yeah. No, Grace is, but second-largest income that we get from the facilities. My second question, I'm so excited that all of our sports teams and everything, the New Canaan-based sports, they don't, are not going to be charged rent, which I think is fabulous. But I'm wondering, so who's paying security, like basketball? I mean, those, those men are in there working their tails off, making sure people don't wipe out on the melted snow. You know, I mean, I'm there all weekend, every winter. So like, so you're talking about overtime. I know overtime was a big issue last year, like, so who pays the overtime then if they're not paying for security at the doors and they're not paying for the OT, for the custodians and, like, how does that all work out?
These are the building rental rates, but they, separate from those are the custodial rates and those others.
Oh, okay, that's totally separate, okay.
Right, so those, and those aren't in here, in the calculation, those, they pay based on the, the contract and those things. And that's separate from the facility usage rates. This is to use the space.
Okay. Another thing, to back to the Walter shock, like, I don't know if we would necessarily grandfather them, like, before this was installed, but that's another option, you know, just to not totally penalize this one organization, but that's just a thought.
Because it literally has been 50 years, I think.
Yeah, a long time.
Yes, Deanna.
I, I also wanted to point out something that, you know, looking through this list that sort of is a little bit glaring, is that sort of because the sports organizations in this town have had the foresight to create 501(c)(3)'s, to become tax-exempt, because they have the parent volunteer base to, to do that, they, they are able to fall into this non-taxable category. But if you look, all the arts programs that are, you know, supporting our children are going to be shifted, because they aren't technically 501(c)(3)'s. So I think, I'm not sure that that's the message we want to convey in our community, is that, you know, sort of we value one group over another in our rental structure. And I think maybe we need to reevaluate sort of how we, we may need to change the language slightly. Maybe it isn't, you know, because, because it is, you know, the for-profit, not-for-profit is, for some of these organizations, is, is really based on manpower to be able to, to manage that kind of an organization. And, and it's not a small effort, having worked with those, you know, there's a lot of tax filings and there's a lot of, lot of effort that goes into creating those. And so, you know, some of these dance academies, I mean, there's, you know, Walter shock isn't the only one, but it's the most impacted. So I, I think we need to sort of maybe revisit this and, and be a little bit more thoughtful about how, because I don't think any of us realized when we were doing this what we might be, what we might be doing to some of these groups. And maybe we, I don't know if we table this and, and revisit the language in the, in the usage, or, you know, I, I don't know what the best way to do it is, but I think there's some unintended consequences for a lot of organizations, Walter shock being the, the biggest, but there are others that, I'm not sure that that was the intent.
Any other comments? Sahida?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I was just going to say, it might be helpful if you just kind of rewound a bit and talked, gave a, a little bit of the context on how this policy was developed, because my understanding was there was some benchmarking involved. I mean, this was a very thoughtful, detailed process that the team went through to get to where we're at. And I understand that the outcome is not necessarily what we expected, but again, I just think it might be helpful context as we move forward in this discussion.
Sure, be glad to. I didn't make copies for the Board this evening, but you may recall that we did a survey of the DRGA towns around, well, all of the DRGA towns are around us, and tried to determine what their rates were, what was including in those rates, et cetera. And so having done that, this was not an analysis of all of our costs. It was looking to upgrade or update our facilities rental rates since they hadn't been changed in a fairly long period of time, kind of matching the policy itself. As we pulled together the team, and again, it included Jay Egan, Alan Sneak, Bob Willoughby, Rob Miller, and myself to come up with the first draft, or third draft, and then had a number of other drafts coming through the Board, which was very helpful, I think, in helping to crystallize what the Board since was in terms of the policy itself. The rental fees were strictly tied to the geographical area and what our competition was also charging. And they clearly broke out the town or town-related, student-related populations, the not-for-profits and the for-profits. All of them across the Board did do that. So that's kind of the genesis of what, what the rental rates look like.
Was the ratio of the increase similar to our ratio increase? In other words, from the nonprofit to the profit-making, was it a similar rate of the percentage or of, of what the increase was from category to category?
Well, we didn't have categories. We, we basically charged by the hour regardless of who did what. So, so from that perspective, again, it, the rate structure was a pretty simple, straightforward structure.
I meant the new rate structure, I'm sorry.
Okay. It was very much in, in a similar proportion.
Yes, that was-
I'm sorry, I'm answering the wrong question.
No, I thought it was probably the same. Deanna, you want to add?
Well, I just, as I look at this, because I do have my sheet comparing, and besides Wilton, which their facilities are a little bit different than ours, especially in auditorium space and things like that, we're, for non-community, for non-community groups, we're far, as I look at this, and maybe I'm not looking at it accurately, we're, for our private for-profit groups, we're far and away much higher than Darien, Westport, and Easton. If I just look at the auditorium, these new rates are, you know, significantly higher than what I at least see on this, on this chart. Now, I don't know if I'm not looking, I mean, I'm looking at, you know, 700 versus 400 at, at Westport and 400 at Easton and, I don't, these are hourly rates, so it's a little different, Weston is, is a little different. These are, some of these are hourly rates.
And these are for, our rates are for three, assuming a usage, three hours.
Okay, so we can calculate it at least. Okay. So, but still, like, okay, so 75, I mean, 75 times three. Now Ridge, Ridgefield is 70, for their auditorium, I don't know what their is, is for out-of-town usage, I don't know, is 225. So I mean, you look at 700 versus 225, we are, these are significantly higher than, you know, except for Wilton, which has a different kind of facility, but, you know, it, it's, it's not even in the ballpark. So I think maybe- the ballpark. So I think maybe, you know, I mean, it's almost like we're just saying we don't want you with these kind of rates.
I do think there was a philosophy that was brought to bear in putting the rates together, in that, you know, encouraging, you know, the use, again, of the local nonprofits that serve all of this, all of our students. And then, as it goes across, you know, the policy does talk about the category two is sort of your, your base rate, and then the category three is double the category two. You know, and then as you get into four and five, you know, it goes up from there with the, with the understanding, the idea that it's, the facilities are focusing on providing room, space for groups that service students of New Canaan, right? And so even part of the difference with category three and category four is a percentage of student, of New Canaan students or people that are involved, where category three is 75 percent, category four is 40 percent or more as we look at it. So there is a philosophy that is in the policy that's meant to be captured in the rate structure. But if the board, if we would like us, this is not something that I would recommend that we start tomorrow regardless. So there certainly is, is time to, to table and to go back to more discussion around sort of how the, the philosophy or the, the kind of vision that's in this policy can be sort of realized or reinforced by the rate structure. That if the board would like that to, to spend some time doing that, that's certainly worthwhile.
I just want to add, because
Yes.
Similar to what Gina said, I think this is well thought out in terms of how to do the categories and again, serving the community. I think Walter Shock is a little unique difference. I know that I appreciate that, you know, dance and other theaters, but we do have two or three other dance and arts that are for-profit, that pay the pro, the for-profit rate. Like I said, I know Walter Shock has a special because it's been here for 50 years. And as you mentioned, maybe we kind of look at them a little differently just because of the history. But the, the protocol itself here does make sense. The fees, I think we're looking at that we don't want to have businesses running a business using the facilities here. So if they're using as a one-off to do a showcase or doing something else, not necessarily run every single class. If they do, they have to pay a rent, just like the, you know, Studio does, or the Performing Arts Theater does, or, you know, all these other groups and stuff, not give them an unfair advantage. Or either way, it doesn't have to be drum, anything. So I think the philosophy behind this, I kind of do like in that, you know, we're trying to promote, make sure like, you know, it is a sports art 501(c), but there's other, going to be other 501(c) that may not be sports related. But I think Walter Shock is kind of like somewhere else compared to everything else. And maybe we just take a look at them separately, as Gina said, you know, and look at that. But the protocol itself and the policy in terms of all these categories and the charges makes sense.
Okay, Jean?
I have a question, and it relates somewhat to Deanna's question. When we say that, say the Studio Performing Arts is a for-profit organization, and it was raised that maybe they're not, maybe they really are not-for-profit, but they don't have the resources to file or become a 4, a 501(c) or whatever it is. Is the, when we say here that they are not-for-profit, do we mean that they have to be a 501(c) or that they are, okay, we could also say that they could, by some other mechanism, be judged to be not-for-profit if in reality they are not-for-profit as opposed to just the 501(c).
The only, the only way I know to determine who is a nonprofit is through the IRS 501(c)(3).
Well, there might be a discretionary, common sense way if someone's, I mean, I realize that allows for discretion and sometimes we don't want that. But that, but that's the sign of the big, the big bank versus the local bank. The local bank can relax their rules sometimes, and sometimes I might make a mistake. But I don't demand that I just throw that out, that maybe 501(c) is not the only, well, while it's tried and true. I'm sure there are 501(c) cheats, by the way. So, so in fact, the 501(c) test may not be very, may not be any better than the local bank approach. I don't know. But I just throw that out for consideration.
Deanna?
I just, I, I under, I appreciate it because I, you know, as somebody that wants to, you know, have a fair, an equitable way of sort of dealing with things, I think as educators and people in, in charge of education, we're, I think, you know, a lot of these groups, you know, all the, all the dance groups and, and, you know, the ones that are getting raised, you know, all of the dance groups, New England Academy of Dance, the Pender Academy, the Studio, these are all supporting the youth in this community. And I think as a community, we are trying to provide opportunities for those kids in this community to have outlets. And the more expensive we make it for kids to have those opportunities, it will either raise the cost to parents, and some will be able to afford it and some will not, or it will drive people out of here. And so I'm not sure that that is what we want to be doing as a community, because we want to have a very rigid standard. And so that, that's what I'm trying to say, is that I think this is the type of community that is trying to encourage activities that are healthy for youth and make it a positive place to live and raise our children. So the more we can do that, I, I would support that. And if we can be flexible to be able to do that, I think it's important. So.
Thank you. Allison?
First of all, Nancy, thank you. You gave us exactly what we asked for. So thank you very much. I know a tremendous amount of, of time and effort went into this. I think maybe we just didn't know what we were asking for. But I think too, to everybody's point, basically what everybody's saying here is that, you know, maybe we want to take a look at, you know, relook at category five, maybe we want to relook at the rates. I would be definitely adverse to setting up categories and then immediately establishing exceptions to various categories. To Sangita's point, I think it's Walter Shock's taking the hardest hit because they, they use the facility, you know, much more than the other arts groups do.
Forty-six times a year.
Right. So they're paying the same rate the other arts groups are paying. They're, they're paying the same rate that everybody else in category five is paying. They just happen to be using it exponentially more. Therefore, their increase is, you know, exponentially more. So maybe it sounds like, from what everybody's saying, is we just want to take a look at category five again, or maybe the rates in category five. So I don't know, Nancy, if maybe the, the next meeting or whenever it's, it's going to be possible for you to do, you could give us a comparative for the other towns just for that category five. And we could just take a look at that. And maybe what we want to do is just lower that a little bit and, and move on. So that's all I have to say.
Whatever the board's direction is, is where we'll go. Is there, is there any other?
Won't be for the next board meeting, though. Yes, Jean?
I do have one other comment. It's my recollection that this issue came up, among other reasons, because it was felt that we weren't, that we were taking a beating, if you will, on our rentals, that it was costing, that they weren't, that renters weren't paying for the, the actual costs were. Now, that makes sense, but at the same time, if we want to make it free for various basketball and baseball and sports and blah, 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 someone therefore has to pay more than what it costs to maintain and run, et cetera. And that might be running into an objection that we heard, that we're charging too much more. So perhaps we have to also look at our philosophy. Are we looking to cover our costs? Or are we looking, in fact, to only cover our costs in certain cases and losing money in the bigger picture?
And Nancy, could you go back over again? You said about the custodians are paid in a different file, different category. And also just a question about what Jean's raising, and which is a good question to ask. If something's damaged, does that come out of additional funds that are asked of the rental, I mean, if there's, or is that just considered part of the rental fee will cover something that's damaged? Or is there a certain cutoff where the damage goes back to the group?
Well, let's use a basketball team as an example. If, for instance, we had a group and we had an extraordinary person dunking and they hung from, from the hoop and they broke the backboard, they'd need to pay us to replace it. In addition to their rental fee, and we set the custodial rates at time and a half and double time every July 1, based on the contract. I kind of changed it around a little bit. In years past, we were billing people for the specific person that was working, which I've never seen before because that's a huge, huge administrivia responsibility. So I just averaged out the high and the lows, said, here it is, here's time and a half, and here's double time. And you win some, you lose some, but it's, it's a rate that everybody knows. So July 1, we set the rate based on the custodian's contract. So whether it's the head custodian working, the assistant head custodian, or the new guy on the block, everybody's paying the same rate. If it's a PTC or a PFA, and there's no need for additional work, it's a little setup or something like that, certainly in the day, we don't charge for that. If the PTC were to have a fundraiser on a Saturday, they would pay a rent, they would pay for overtime as well. That's included, they would always pay the custodial fees. And included in here for the non-standard kinds of things, they would also pay a rent.
I guess I'm sort of trying to address the point that Jean was saying about the use. Are we covering the use or the wear and tear of what's happening? Obviously, if 100 people walk on here, you don't see the carpet problems until five years of 100 people every day walking or something. But I, so some of it you don't see. It's not as if it's an immediate damage. But are we covering our costs presently for the buildings and the usage and whatever happens? Or do we need to?
Well, we, I did not attempt, as I mentioned, the genesis of this was a survey of our, of our DRG towns. And I surveyed a few other, like Greenwich and, and that as well, as, as the place to start, to dig into what does it cost per hour on fuel and utilities, on the cost of wax and replacement of floor tiles and things like that. You need somebody besides me to do that.
Okay. Yes, Deanna.
I just wanted to add one more thing officially to the record, just because I did a little research before today's meeting to get a, a sense for sort of what, you know, Walter Shock, that particular program gives back to the community. And, you know, it, it impacts 350 to 400 kids annually. And it, over the 50 years of its life here in, in New Canaan has given over $800,000 in college scholarships to kids, $29,000 last year alone. Five of those scholarships went to New Canaan kids in, in the amount of $14,000. That did not come through the schools. They used to go through the schools. They used to give the money directly to the schools and then the school would give the scholarships. Now, because of sort of whatever, they, they do that independently. They take their own thing. So, you know, it's, it's a not-for-profit on its, on one part of its business and the other part is not, not-for-profit. But, you know, in any sense of the word, that, you know, they're giving back to the community much more than many other organizations that maybe, you know, are categorized differently. So I just, I wanted that officially in the record so people understood, because I don't think a lot of people know that. So.
We've had a number of things that have been shared about this, and I think people have come up with different ideas and everything. Just summarizing quickly, some of the things have been to investigate more. There are other options also, that if anyone wants to amend this motion, they could amend the motion. Those are the kinds of things we can go from here and I would be open to.
Make a motion to table it.
We can make a motion to table it also. Thank you. So there are several things that we could do, and I'd like to hear from you where you'd like to go from this.
I would move to table it until we have more information. That would be my suggestion.
I mean, what information are we getting?
Because I think we need to be clear for Nancy, because we have been moving her through this process. And I think, you know, we all agreed with the strategy of, of the policy. We all agreed with, you know, the classification, the four classifications. It's just when we actually came to look at the outcomes and it being a small community,
you know, we're finding some things that weren't expected. So I think we need to be very clear to allow some efficiency on Nancy's part with what more information, you know, we're, we're looking for.
I liked, I liked what Allison said. I mean, not, it's not only just Walter Shock. I mean, my son is involved in a basketball, a small basketball travel league that was completely, you know, wasn't even able to, to practice in New Canaan because of rates or there wasn't, there was four kids and it wasn't the actual percentage. And so they were told they couldn't have gym space, like that kind of stuff. So maybe if we could reevaluate exactly what category five is and if we could somehow lower, I mean, gym usage for a non-New Canaan for-profit is $500. And he doesn't have, I know they don't have a 501(c), and it's just, again, more of the organization and the funds to get that. But that's a, that's a lot of money for one practice, right, a week? I mean, if that's, what is, the $500, is that per use? Like
Yes.
For one hour, it's three hours?
Three hours.
Okay. But maybe like what you said, maybe just coming back with a, a different number, percentage of increase from four to five even?
So I'm just, I'm hearing two different things that I just do think it's important to, to reconcile, which is, one is about the policy itself and the categories, and another is about the rate structure. Right? Because the policy itself was put together last year, and I think it went through four different meetings and conversations
Yes.
to get to that. So, I mean, it's, it's okay, whichever direction, you know, the board would like to go. But it would, as you say, it would be important for us to, to receive that direction so we can deliver.
I mean, me personally, I mean, I, I just think the jump is, is really high from, especially people that have already been using our facilities to moving, like if they're all of a sudden moved into category five, like that's a huge jump. And maybe either looking at grandfathering certain people or maybe looking to lower the category five rate. And then again, like we need to look, are we making a profit on this or are we covering our costs? And I don't know if we've ever actually decided on that.
That's the question I was asking too. And I'm, and Nancy said it's, this is hard to, we're not going to be counting the, the wax. And that's a good question. Jean?
I don't think it's fair to Nancy to ask the administration or the administration to recraft this. I think we have to, they've been doing what we've asked them to do all along. They've been doing, pushing the paper and coming up with suggestions and doing surveys, everything we've asked them to do. And we said, okay, sounds good. And now we see that what we have crafted and they have administered is, is not to our liking. So I don't think it's fair to Nancy and the administration to, to try and second guess what, what our intent is. We have to decide what our intent is and realize that we want to make exceptions or grandfather, whatever that is. I don't think we should just throw out ideas to, to the administration. We should be clear in these areas if, if we're not satisfied with, with our own results. I certainly think we should table the, the motion, by the way, while we grapple with that.
So we'll bring it back again if we table? Yes, Allison?
The only thing I was going to say is I don't hear anybody having any issues with the actual policy.
That's
Right. So I mean, I don't know if we could move forward with the policy.
It's the results.
It sounds like, it sounds like really the only thing we're talking about is category five with regards to rates, unless there's something else missing. But
Well, I mean, I think, you know, I think none of us knew the, the consequences of, I think we didn't have this and we didn't, we didn't have the rates when we approved it. And we didn't have the, they all tie together. So unfortunately, now that we have the rates and the consequences of the language, you know, I think we may need to revisit some of the language in the facilities because, you know, if we want to be absolutely consistent, if people aren't comfortable with grandfathering, I mean, there's a lot of discussion items now that are coming up. It's, it's, are we going to slightly change the language so that we don't have the unintended consequences that we have and that we're consistent? Are we comfortable grandfathering? And, you know, I mean, those are, they're, they're very needy questions and, and they address both the policy and the rates. And so I, I'm not sure we can, I, I almost feel like we need to go back and now that we have seen the consequences of what we've done, to revisit. And I don't know that Nancy has to do that. I think it's, it's a board discussion, but maybe
When do we do that?
I have a question. But didn't we approve the policy already when we just
No, there's a motion, a motion to approve.
The rates.
The policy's already been approved.
Policy was approved.
So, yeah.
Sorry, I missed that being.
So that's already done. I mean, all the categories, it's just a matter of looking at the rates, whether we don't like the way the rates are done, which I think makes sense. People are saying the category five is not, is too big or jumped. And so, you know, in terms of information, to go back to Nancy's, just to ask, and it may be already in that other one she gave us, you know, in terms of what are the rates at the other places? And are we really making that leap as, as Deanna had mentioned, that, you know, they're at 400 and we're going to 700? That, that seems
Right. But I do agree with Jean, like, this discussion has to be done amongst, you know, the board. Like, are we going for profit? Are we covering our costs? Are we grandfathering? Are we looking at lowering the category five? Like, those are, we have to decide if that's how we want to move forward.
And, yes, Allison?
I just want to say, I just want to caution the board, because we have a lot of work to do. We have a lot of policies and we have a lot of work to do. So I think we just have to be careful not to get caught in the weeds and the details on, on a lot of these, even though, to your point, Jen, you know, these are very important. on a lot of these, even though, to your point, Jen, you know, these are very important numbers, and they have, they're very impactful for certain community organizations. And we addressed this when we first started talking about this, that these are community assets that we have, and what does the board's philosophy going to be, and develop the rates, you know, around the board's philosophy. So it sounds like we're there now, but I would just, I think we're going to need to make a decision probably in the short term, it's the beginning of the school year, it's a wonderful time to initiate all this. And I think we could go back and forth on this, you know, quite a bit. But, you know, it's the beginning of the school year, and we do have an awful lot of work to do, so.
But just a question on that. I mean, I do, I think everyone agrees, though, that we need to table this. It's a good point. But can we just agree on the best way to address that? I mean, can we give it to the policy subcommittee? Can we address this in our next workshop meeting? Because I think we're now committed to, on a, every third meeting, having a Board of Ed workshop. Could this be added to that agenda for further discussion? I mean, I think, I think there is consensus that we need to table this discussion, correct? So can we try to get consensus on how to best move forward with this?
Yes.
But when is our next? Because the timing Allison's mentioned, because I don't think it's till October. And since we're at the beginning of the year, you know, we're kind of in the middle of upsetting all the facility rates and such for the administration and how they work forward. Are they going to continue on to this, what we have right now and not implement this?
Well, this is the second part of what we need to do. First, we need to do this, and then we, on the implementation, we have to also figure out when we want to implement this. Do we want to start it, leave things as they are, and then have it a year from now? Or do we want to have, that's another question. That's another question. That was my next question on the list after we approve something.
If we approve something. If we don't approve it, we don't move to B.
No, we don't move to B. That's right.
I mean, we should surely be able to work efficiently enough to move forward on this, to have new, you know, the new policy and rates in effect for July 1 of 2015, which is what is proposed.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I was sure we were talking about this year or not. That's it.
So this, you know, we talk about forming subcommittees and sort of that process beginning. So this certainly, this could be something that goes to a resources subcommittee, since we're really talking about, or policy.
Yes.
Guru.
Yes.
But it could, for that, for the debate and the discussion, and then anyone could come to that discussion. But then it would still need to go before the full board for a vote. The, you know, the idea around the subcommittees is they process some of this stuff that we're talking about in a smaller group in order to make recommendations to the full board as a result of those, and then the full board would take a look at it and talk about it. So given that we don't have significant urgency, just in that whatever the decision is around the rates, in my proposal, my recommendation going into it would be to delay the implementation of that until the new fiscal year, since there are plenty of places that have already planned out their year and charging their fees and rates to students and others based on our existing rates. Given that, I'd say we have enough time for it to, for it to be tabled and then discussed in a subcommittee. And then that subcommittee, when the time is right, can present it to the, their thinking around it, to the full board for further debate and ultimately approval or amendment and change and whatever it might be. So I think that's probably, and we talk about best ways to get the work done, I think that's probably the best way to get this type of work done.
And there are two committees that you think fit this well, resource, the resource committee or the policy updating committee?
Jean, could you schedule a meeting with yourself, please?
I would.
And invite anyone else who has.
I had a meeting today.
I would, my first thought would be that the resources committee, when established, would be the appropriate piece, because we are, the policy exists, and it's about the implementation of the policy and putting those things together. But.
So can I then make a motion to take this proposal, present it forth through the resources committee for further discussion, to bring it back to the board with the recommendation?
I think that we can. I'm trying to see, because we never, we have one that's.
We're just, we're tabling this for future.
Table it for future. Okay, great. We have to table it. Okay. Yes, so we have a committee officially, I think, but that motion would be very appropriate when we step by step go into that.
But we do have an established policy, because.
Right, so isn't that the most actionable item to move this to the policy committee? Because that policy committee is already approved.
I would recommend just tabling it at this point, and then.
Yes. It's not clear that the policy committee is a committee.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Yeah. Policy committee is approved. So I'm saying we could action this and move it to the policy committee.
Right, but this actual policy's done. We voted on this already. Do you want corrections, making changes to it?
Allison, can you lean into your mic, just so everybody can hear, just a little bit? Thank you. Are you talking about making changes to it?
I could probably make a sound rationale for why this would make sense moving to the policy committee, because this is, we're now talking about the implementation of a policy. I think it would fall within the charter, and the policy committee is approved. So in order for us to action this more quickly, I might suggest we move it to the policy committee.
I don't believe the policy committee is approved.
Oh, no, you're right. We haven't. It's, the only one that's approved is communications.
Yes.
Yeah, let's table.
Because it has to go for the full board.
Yes. We have a motion, and was there a motion? Was there a motion from someone who wanted to table?
A motion to table.
We have a motion on the floor.
If the communications committee will take it.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor now to table this and for further study and discussion, and to be determined when, which group it'll be discussed and how. And there's a second. We need a second for that motion. Jean? There's a second on that motion, that we table it, and that there will be further discussion to be determined on that. Can we have a vote on that? All those in favor of that motion, please signify by raising your hands. Two, three. Did you vote, you're voting, and that was a vote, Sheri? Yes, Allison, okay, that is unanimous vote then. All right. That was certainly an interesting discussion. And I think Mrs. Harris is thinking, it's a good thing sometimes to have a rest period under a, under a medical condition, maybe. Yes, something to that effect. Now, looking at our agenda at this point, we will move to the other action item, number two, the secretary's contract. And we need to move to approve the final version of the secretary's contract that has been ratified by the membership. Is there a motion that we do that? So move that, that we.
The final version of the secretary's contract that has been ratified by the membership.
Yes, and so there's now a motion on that. Is there a second? Thank you, Jen. Second on that. All those in favor?
Discussion.
Oh, discussion, sorry. Right, I don't want to rush it through. Is there any discussion on the secretary's contract? There being, oh, yes, Gary, yes.
I would just want to, before you take this final vote, I want to say that we had very positive negotiations with our secretarial union. We discussed over 26 different aspects of this contract, and it was discussed in a climate of mutual respect, and I thought you would appreciate knowing all that. The contract is fair, agreed upon, fair to both sides, and it was ratified by the union, as you know. And I'm recommending the board approve this contract tonight.
We've had a motion from Jean that we approve this. We've had a second from Jen. And is there any further discussion on this? All those in favor of this motion, please signify by raising their hands, and that is unanimous for the group. Thank you for that. Now on to action item number three, the donation from the Booster Club. Move to accept donation from the All Sports Booster Club allocated for volunteer and coach Stibman's fall 2014 season. Is there someone who would like to make a motion about that?
Before you, before you do.
Yes.
Where I can speak just briefly to the approach here that we're following. The complexity has proved to be such that I don't have the number that I had hoped to have for you tonight. But essentially, to let you know what we're doing, we are similar to how we moved the, a few years ago, we moved the individual sports boosters into the student activity accounts. We're looking to do a similar thing with our All Sports Booster Club, in that we've got volunteer coaches that work each year in all the seasons in support of our other staff, and they work in different capacities. They're, they've been paid by the All Sports Booster Club in their work. So it's supplement to, it supplants, in essence, our budget around the athletics and the coaches. So what we're looking to do is have that money come to us first, and then have it dispersed through us for its accounting purposes, for human resources purposes, and other things. So it's another way that we're working to sort of keep track of the expenditures, as you know, that any expenditures on school activities and things is, we do need to keep an eye on it around Title IX requirements and other things. So this is another way that we can do that as a, as a piece of that and a piece of quality control a little bit, as far as, you know, the expenditures and things. So there'll be more information coming in the future about it. It's just, again, it's sort of the complexity of pulling it all together has proven to be a challenge. I'd hope that we'd have that, the actual number tonight, but we don't.
Does anyone have any questions about that?
Do we need the actual number to approve the motion, or just, or do we have to wait?
I would feel better if we did.
Okay, all right, so we'll hold on. That sounds like a good way to go, since we don't really have a number on it.
Yeah.
Now, we'll look at the consent agenda. And you see that there are two items on the consent agenda. And is there someone who would like to move that we accept the consent agenda?
That we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second on that? Yes. Thank you, Sheri. Is there any discussion on this? There being no discussion on it? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hands, and that's a unanimous vote. Announcements in future meetings.
Sure. So for our September 22 meeting, we are looking at putting together a brief presentation around school climate and safety, sort of how those things work together. As you've heard, and I'm sure through recently and through our last year, the school safety initiatives have been very important for us in the schools and things that we're working on. So an update now, as we're opening the year on some of those initiatives and things, and, you know, thinking that there's a very close connection between that work and school climate as well, you know, and sort of some of the school climate work that we're doing. So we'll put those together for a few minutes, just to give, share an update on some of that work. And then, as we mentioned before, we could have the committee charters for the Board of Ed's subcommittees for first read and sort of presentation and sharing as we go through that process together.
There was a question that came up about, also from the communications committee, if they, if we would like, since the other committees are going to be working on their charters and presenting charters, hopefully, that would the communications committee want to present then? Or would it be enough with just the charters? Because we'll have a discussion. And that was a question from the chair and the communications committee.
So do you want an update from the communications committee at the meeting?
At the meeting, sure.
On September 22. Sure.
All those that would like, have any indication, anybody want to say, all right? I had a couple people saying yes.
Sounds good.
Yes, all right.
I don't want to hear from you. You've been so good at communicating, I don't feel like I need it.
Yes, it's true.
You're so good, I don't want to know any less.
I think the intent would, as the subcommittees come together, is the intent is, maybe it's once a month, the subcommittees would report out to the full board on the, sort of what's going on, what's happening, and what have you. So we're reporting out on the other charters.
That'd be good. It does fit right there.
Seems to make good sense.
And then we always want to hear what you're doing, because it's exciting. So that sounds good. All right, now, are there any people who would like to make comments from the public? There being no one who wants to make comments, then do I have a motion to adjourn? Sheri? Motion to adjourn, second, Allison. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, and that's unanimous again. Thank you to everyone.